We've got a full house this evening. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont Combination Committee, the whole meeting, and official voting Village Board meeting for January 17th, 2011. I'd like to ask our Village Clerk, Virginia Simmsky, to take the roll call, please.
Here, Ron.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emory?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Forsley?
Here.
Trustee Klebanow?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Fire Chief Trout?
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
Indrum Finance Director Mathis?
Here.
Human Resource Administrator Casey?
Here.
Budget Analyst Parker?
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Weiss?
Here.
Engineering Supervisor Noriega?
Here.
And if I missed anybody, I'm really sorry. Just stay here.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item before us this evening are the minutes of the Village Board Committee, the whole meeting held January 3rd, 2011. Any corrections to be reported to the clerk at this time? Thank you. Moving right along, open forum.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Emory.
Any further questions? Roll call on the minutes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Okay, next is open forum, and to my knowledge, we have no open forum requests before us this evening. Moving right along, reports, the mayor. The first thing I would like to do is to go right into the second item that's listed on the agenda, and that is Staff Service Recognition Awards. And we've got Ron Searle, myself, and Kathy Casey can, if we can go ahead and come up and present these awards to all these outstanding employees that we have with us this evening in the Village of Westmont. And we certainly appreciate all the efforts that you've extended throughout the years, the year, the years that you've worked, all the years that you've worked so diligently for our fine Village of Westmont. With that being said, Kathy, are you ready? All right. And I'm sure not everyone is here, but we'll go through the names and see who is or is not here. First, we know he's here. Five-year pin is for Spencer Parker. Congratulations. Thanks. Same like just yesterday that he started working here in the Village of Westmont. Next is Timothy Reinhardt. Is he here?
Oh.
Okay. David Newton.
Oh.
Marguerite Reagan. Yes? No? No. Albert Rhodey.
Yes.
And Tim. Congratulations. Yeah, I didn't see you sitting there. Thank you. And next, board member, Edno Cowskew, who's on our police pension board and retired. How many years ago did you retire?
Six and a half.
Six and a half years ago.
Yes.
So he served the police department many, many years, and he continues to serve every year on our police and pension board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He also has a wonderful Corvette that I've never been able to see. Next, we get into the 10-year, excuse me. Who'd I forget? Ten. 10-year pins. Gene Pollan Jr. Oh, I'm sorry. Tim Stafford. Tim here.
Five.
Five years. Okay. And Gene Pollan is not here. Rick Tighe? T-I-G-H-E?
No.
John Ziblis? Where's John? Congratulations.
Thank you.
John was complaining that Fred Kimball made him put a tie on today. Thanks for making him change that, Frank. John Barnacle. Kathleen Fergala. Joseph Newton. David Zinter. Paso Malamos. James Schneider. Many more years of service to the village. Thank you. Jim Bork?
Not here.
Noriel Noriega's here. I like to call him Mr. Smiles. Congratulations. Jeffrey Bummer?
Not here.
Okay, Jim, James Katz. George Harrison?
Not here.
Not here. Frank Coolis Jr.
Not here.
Not here. And then we have one for Village Trustee, for a 10-year pin, Lee Fleming. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we move up to the 15-year pins. And first is David Lincoln. Greg Compton.
Not here.
Scott Teeter.
Not here.
Beth Davis.
Oh.
And next, we have another elected official, Pat Klebanow. That's it for the pins, and now we get to the heavy hitters. These are, oh, excuse me. Larry McIntyre would like to take a picture of all the recipients that received their pins that are here tonight.
Did you receive the pins? Can we get a group photo of everybody?
It's short people on the front.
Holy Nora, that's a Berkeley challenge. That's so cute.
Did you get it?
I'll get it real shy.
Oh, okay. Can he come back up?
Could we have him back up because he just missed a follow-up?
Yeah. He missed a follow-up, but I'm going to have to call Diane.
And the next is Len Gablewski.
Not here.
Not here. And Amy Jean Graves.
Not here.
Then we have another apartment director, Public Works Director. Jettie never knew what his middle initial was. Stephen M. May. Michael Klosick.
Not here, sir.
Not here. Thank you. And we've got two plaques for 25-year veterans. Margaret BJ Uar?
Not here.
Bajor?
Not here.
Not here. One mugshot photo and your pin. Thank you. Congratulations. Now, we've got one 30-year plaque, and that's for Craig Rember. Craig is the chairman of our police pension fund, and also has been a coach for Little League forever in the Village of Westmont. I think he's worked with all three of our children at one time or another. Congratulations, Craig. Next, the 35-year plaque, and that's for Joe Barrett.
Not here.
Not here.
Was here, he's throwing sauce.
Yeah. Excellent. Then the final category for 40-year plaques, first is Ed Jenkins. Not that put in 40 years. Thank you.
Can you get a group shot of all the plaque recipients?
Okay. And now Frank Trout, our fire chief, has another short presentation that he would like to present this evening. Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. The fire department would also like to issue its 40-year ribbon to Bob. Bob? You can turn around.
Don't stick. Please don't stick.
Now, Frank, I know you like to kid around, but did you just call him sweetheart?
He's called me sweetheart. I always do. I don't want to break the, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, chief.
He's older than I am. Now I know why people have a lot of trouble.
I could feel like David.
Okay, very good. And that's Deputy Chief Dave Weiss.
Good thing there's no magnets around.
Is there a paramedic here?
We can do it.
I didn't even see Jim Farley.
Oh, the good people.
He's amazing, look at the work he does. It's really admirable of him. Totally nice. You did.
Steve?
Steve.
The next thing I'd like to bring up is to offer our condolences to the family, in particular Dolores Habenreiser, on the recent passing of Rod Habenreiser, who both were very long-term residents of the Village of Westmont. And he was also served as the former director and a member of the Westmont Emergency Management Agency, as we call it, ISDA. He served the village, once again, for a very long, long period of time, and will be remembered by many of us for many years to come. So our condolences to the Habenreiser family. Next, I'd like to report that Bob Cavanda, who's the chair of our Police and Fire Commission, recently had quadruple bypass surgery, and as reported by his wife, is now at home recovering. So our best wishes for a speedy recovery for Bob Cavanda. And next, I'd just like to mention, I just received a letter in the mail, a letter that was sent by the Brownie Troop Leader, 51960. And this is, came from the, a letter that was sent to me by the members of that Girl Scout, Brownie Troop Leader. And what they're asking for is to have some graffiti which is, which is written on the bench and a few other places at the Fairfield Totlot Park. So I just wanted to thank all those girls for sending the letter to me, and I will in turn, turn this letter over to our Public Works Department and Steve May, and see what we can do to remove the graffiti from that park area. And they requested that that be done in time for spring, before everyone is back out using that park over in that area. So thank you for sending that letter to me. And moving right along, the next thing I wanted to discuss is the BYO, Bring Your Own Booze, Bring Your Own Bottle Liquor License Review. And as I spoke to the reporter who's with us this evening, that since that ordinance was passed, I believe it was last spring, we have not received any requests from any liquor-serving establishments in the Village of Westmont to request to be able to package up a bottle of wine that has not been consumed completely by individuals attending the various restaurants throughout Westmont. However, we're going to keep that ordinance on the books, and if anyone in the future would like to look into that particular ordinance, we have it available at all times through our clerk's office. Is there anything more you wanted to add?
Just that if there are any applications or any licenses, we will again, we institute the six-month review. At this time, we don't recommend having a review since we have no licenses. There's been 0% interest. No one showed an interest in taking any of these applications out. The one business who did, and Dolores was just created for, never came into Westmont. However, it's on the books in case we do need it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Next is a proclamation for radon awareness month. Proclamation is supported radon action month in the Village of Westmont, whereas radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that threatens the health of our citizens, and whereas the Surgeon General has warned that radon is the second-leading cause of lung cancer in the United States. It is the number-one cause among non-smokers, whereas 1 in 15 homes across the U.S. has an elevated radon level, whereas any home in Westmont may have an elevated level of radon, even if other homes in the same neighborhood do not. And whereas testing for radon is simple and inexpensive, and whereas identified radon problems can be fixed. And whereas the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Division of Nuclear Safety Radon Program and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency are supporting efforts to encourage Illinoisans to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated labels, levels of radon, and build new homes with radon-resistant materials and features. Therefore, the Village of Westmont hereby proclaims January 2011 official radon action month here in the Village of Westmont. Thank you. And that is all that I have at this point in time. Moving right along, our village clerk.
I just wanted to congratulate our water supervisor, Mike Ramsey, on the nice article about him in the Naperville Area Magazine. Mike has been a soccer coach for his daughter's teams for years, and some of the parents asked the newspaper or this magazine to please write an article on him because he has done such a fine job. And I think that's a tribute to Mike and his character. Mike is a very pleasant person to work with, and I would, I can see him as a coach being extremely caring and pleasant. So I just want to congratulate him. I was very proud of him when I read the article, so that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Our village attorney, John Zemanek.
Thank you, Mary. I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Village manager, Ron Searle.
Thank you. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out, that on the agenda, there are three purchase orders that are also simultaneously appearing on the finance ordinance. The first one is to lithoprint for the village calendar. It's number 11025122. Then number 11025136 to Larry McIntyre, also for calendar work. And then 11025197 to Irma, our self-insurance pool, for our annual premium. Then I also wanted to request an executive session for personnel. And also just wanted to congratulate, I know all the employees have gone at this point, but I want to congratulate them for their awards tonight and thank them for their years of service. This is the second year in a row now we've tried to recognize it here at the board, and it is a real pleasure to work with a group of people that are so dedicated and hardworking here at the Village of Westmont. And that is all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee item, start with trustee Emory.
Thank you. I also am requesting executive session for personnel tonight, and also, I'd like to ask the residents of Westmont to follow, there's a little saying that Metro uses on the train, and it's appropriate for Westmont with the increase in tagging graffiti, spray painted on buildings, and various items of property. And what they say on the train is if you see something, say something. So please, we're getting emails when people spotted after it's done, and we appreciate them greatly so that Public Works can get on it. But if you see somebody doing it, please pick up your cell phone, do something to let us know what's going on, because we got a crackdown on it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Forsley.
I just wanted to also extend my sympathies to the Habenreiser family. I've known them for a long time and taught one of the children, so it was saddened to hear about that. And the radon, just to tell people to get it tested, I got mine tested last year, and I did just the home thing, went over there to Bales, picked up the kit, and it was elevated. And so you need, you need to take care of that. And for some of you that are on the board, my family, my dad had it in their house, and he had, that's how they, he had cancer, lung cancer, and they said it was from the radon. So he's, he's doing fine. I mean, he's, he's okay, but it's more serious than... So, he's, he's doing fine, I mean, he's, he's okay, but it's more serious than people think. So, if you can get out and get that tested, I think you'll, you'll be better off for it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. I too want to congratulate all of our employees on their longevity awards and pins and plaques, and also just to take a second to especially thank EMA, and our police, and our fire, and our public works. I mean, it's, you know, we appreciate them every single day, but especially on days like this, because guess what? They're the ones that are out there taking care of everything for us, and it's very, very much appreciated. So, thank you, and congratulations to everyone. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
The only thing that I have to say has to do with a very public issue. I want to thank our state Senator Kurt Dillard and our state Representative Patty Belloc for having the forethought to vote no to the tax increase and corporate tax increase in this state. That being said, for those who voted yes, obviously do not care about those hard-working individuals in the state of Illinois, and want to put the burden back on them, as well as our governor basically lying and making the comment he was only looking for a 1% increase.
Or less.
Or less, and he decided to raise it more. The unfortunate thing is, and the comment was made, that no businesses will leave Illinois because of this. Well, I think they need to take a very hard look at this, because there are already businesses that were teetering on leaving the state of Illinois based on what was going to happen. I do hope that our state legislators and senators would please go back and take a hard look at what they've done. They obviously cannot fiscally handle what needs to be done within this state, but yet at a local level, we are required to have a balanced budget, and we fight that every year. I think the same should be said of this state, and it is a sad day that it's come to this point without them taking a look at what they can possibly cut before they make these increases, to go forth and try to recoup another $6.3 billion, which everyone knows they still won't make any cuts, they'll just find a way to spend that money and put us further in debt. So, that's my public service announcement at this point. I just felt that I had to say something, as well as compliment our state Senator Kurt Dillard and our Representative Patty Belloc for voting no to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Scott.
On April 21st, at the Westmont High School, the world-famous Harlem Wizards basketball team will be performing their trick hoops and alley hoops. There's no time on it yet, and it'll be coming soon, and we'll forward it on to the public soon as that happens. They're also looking for volunteers for this event, and that meeting is going to be at the Community Room at Manning High School on February 3rd at 7:00 P.M.
What kind of volunteering do they look for?
It doesn't say. All I've got is a sheet on, so probably taking tickets and...
Shooting hoops?
Probably.
February 3rd?
February 3rd.
At 7:00?
7:00 P.M. for the volunteer meeting.
Thanks.
You're welcome. And that's it, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Klebina.
Going through my papers, I found something, I'm presuming it's still on, and that is our Relay for Life. Their 2011 kickoff event is this Monday, January 24th, at the Westmont Yard Indoor Sports Complex. They passed out a sheet a long time ago, and thank God I held on to it, and I have not heard of it being canceled, so let everybody know it is on, and hopefully January 24th, get over to 63rd Street to the Westmont Yard Indoor Sports, and let's have a great kickoff event.
Sarah, time.
Thank you. 6:30 to 8:00.
Thanks.
6:30 to 8:00. Thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. New business. Westmont Public Library Intergovernmental Agreement. Board do consider an ordinance approving a revised intergovernmental agreement for the Village of Westmont to charge for and to provide accounting dash bookkeeping services to the Westmont Public Library.
A little more than a year ago, we entered into a contract to provide accounting services for the Westmont Library, and this current agreement that you find in your packet is an updated version that includes a, an increase in the monthly amount that, that we would be compensated by the library, as well as provides for a, an opportunity to renew it in the future. The initial agreement was for a set period of time, and we need, needed to reconsider that at this point, so that's why it's being brought to the board.
Any questions?
I do have a question on it. On part for the compensation, now I noticed that we have gone up from the last one, from 500 to 525.
Correct.
But it says for the first year, now this contract is extendable for five years. Does that mean every year we're going to go up 25, or are we going to just, I believe it was something at the end of that says that the renegotiable at the discretion of the village. So, does that mean every year we're going to relook at this for their price?
We wanted some language in there to have an opportunity to have that discussion with them, but that does, the way it's worded, it doesn't mean that automatically it's going to go up each year.
But we do have that option, that if we decide the cost has gone up. Do, it doesn't say, do they have the option, or is their option just getting out of the contract?
Well, they have, they certainly have the option to get out of the contract. They can provide notice.
Okay. Because it just, it just was one way talking about that the village, you know, to the discretion of the village, and I didn't know if the library was included in that, so as long as I know...
We would have a discussion with them at the time. We wanted to have some language in there in case our costs went up to be able to address that with them, and that's why it's worded the way it is. If they chose not to renew the contract, you know, they would have that option to provide notice to us.
But this 5% is just this year, and we'll reconsider each of the extending years to see if we can hold it or have to raise it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? That being said, roll call.
No, I have to have more.
The motion, then a roll call.
Motion to approve, Fleming.
Second, Scott.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Next item, Fiscal Year 2009-2010 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Board do consider acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2009-2010 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
We have Mr. Dan Berg here from Sickich to provide that report to the board.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you all for having me. It's always a pleasure to speak to the people that I actually work for, the board of trustees. I work with staff, but I work for, for the board, and I do have a little bit of a mixed bag to report to you as financially. The audit itself went very smoothly. We, we were done with our field work on schedule, and, and the result is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which was issued just after Christmas, so in the week between Christmas and New Year's, we, Spencer just informed me that it was submitted to the GFAW, and we're confident that Government Finance Officers Association will award the village the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, as you have received in, in the past. So, that said, the best news I'm allowed to give you is the best news that I can give you, and that's that we did issue a clean opinion on this report. It is comprehensive, so if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it yet, I would strongly encourage anyone that is interested to read the transmittal letter written by staff, as well as the management discussion and analysis, which appears right after our opinion, describes how the village achieved the results that it did. Additionally, it has a statistical section in the back of the report that shows multi-year trend information on a variety of financial information, very, very useful in evaluating the results. When I said the mixed bag, what I meant was that in this economic time, the village is very much like most of my other clients, in that revenues were down significantly, and the village did indeed react quickly to those down revenues to cut costs. However, it still had, the village had a negative year for the governmental activities as, and most especially in the general fund itself. The village was very active in, in controlling costs, but it's difficult to control some of your fixed costs in, in these times. The enterprise fund, the water fund, however, did have a profit, which is very important that the village continue to evaluate those types of activities to make sure that it doesn't have to be subsidized from other operations, especially taxing operations, and it has the ability to build up a little bit of a surplus in order to replace the infrastructure as it depreciates. One of the other areas the village, I strongly recommend the village keep an eye on is in the police pension fund. It had a good year this year, adding $1.3 million to the bottom line, however, with the, the actuary reporting and requirements that, that are in place, the actuary was asking the village to put in, or the report asked the village to put in, more than it did. Obviously, the, the less the village puts in, the more you need to make up for in interest income, investment earnings, and that's difficult to do in these times. So, just, just need to keep an eye on that. The other pension funds, the IMRF was reduced in its funding level. The village did put in 100% of its required contribution, but due to the economic times, the state, that's a state-run program, and the actual assets reduced in spite of the, the, the village's contributions, so the funding levels were reduced as a result. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the process or the results. I'd certainly, I, I believe the three-year trend information was distributed to all of you, which is, we think, kind of useful for the general fund and the water fund, the two largest funds of the, of the village. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on that, or any of the other reports that we issued in conjunction with the audit.
Questions, board members?
I, I just wanted to also thank village staff, especially Spencer, and the other people in the finance department for their assistance that was provided during the audit. It really enabled us to adhere to our, our schedule and to the village's schedule to achieve this final product.
Could you just go over the, the police pension fund again?
Sure.
Because I, I thought we, we upped that.
We did.
We did, to 105%, didn't we?
Correct. That's going to be the case over the next several years.
Okay. So, how could we be underfunding it?
We're not under, we have, because of...
We're missing the point.
Because of returns, it is underfunded currently, so the village is taking steps to...
Catch up.
Catch up over the next...
Okay. We're catching up and trying to address each year what we're told by the actuary we need to fund.
And we, we went over...
Another piece to, to consider is that this report is the one that was not this current year, but the year before.
Oh, that's right.
So, in the current budget year, which will be concluding in April, we've upped our percentage and gone to the 105%.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
But in the prior year, we had not.
Yeah.
So, it was this issue that had occurred previously that kind of caused the board to look at it and decide they wanted to change the way they're doing it for the future. So, we are doing it differently for the future, but the past is what's recorded here.
So, this next report, next year is going to be...
Much better.
Okay. Right up there, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We talked about this in committee, so I think we're all pretty tuned. Thank you.
Isn't it, isn't it fortunate that we have the funds to be able to put into these retirement funds? It's obviously not the case with a lot of villages throughout the state of Illinois, probably through, throughout the country. So, through wise management of the village funds in the, in the past, we're able to not only meet the, the requirements, but exceed what we normally would be putting into some of these retirement accounts.
Absolutely. And as, as you all know, the pension requirements have grown to a great extent in the past several years. Some of that market-driven by the, the lack of investment returns, some of it benefit-driven by the increase in benefits. We have a number of clients that are especially hard-hit, especially the non-home rule communities that don't have the ability to raise taxes in order to pay into the pension. They have to literally take money out of their operations and, and put into the pension if they choose to fully fund, and most, many, many of my clients are choosing not to fully fund their pensions at this time. They simply can't afford the cuts in other areas that that would entail.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Motion to approve, Seneca?
Second, Emery.
Final discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebina?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Who did I leave out? Trustee Emery.
Thank you. Next item, Baxter and Woodman Engineering Services Agreement. Board do consider an engineering services agreement for Phase 2 and Phase 3 engineering services regarding the south pressure-adjusting station reconstruction. Steve, Steve May?
Thank you, Mayor. Firstly, the, the pressure-adjusting stations are our water distribution system. We do purchase our water already treated from the DuPage Water Commission, who receives, who purchases it from the city of Chicago. We have two access points where we gain our water supply, and at each of these access points, the, the DuPage Water Commission maintains their own metering station so that they know what kind of volume they're distributing to us for, or sell to us, and similarly, immediately adjacent that, we maintain what we call a pressure-adjusting station, but it also contains water meters as well, so that we can double-check what's, what kind of flows we're taking. The pressure-adjusting station, the, the water is delivered at a much higher pressure than what we operate our system at village-wide. So, the pressure-adjusting station reduces that pressure, and we actually supply the water distribution system directly from these access points. Our, one pressure-adjusting station, we have two, like I said, the one on the south side not only is in need of some repair, but our, and, and in a way I don't understand, or I'm not sure what, what the thinking was at the time, but ours are all below grade. The DuPage Water Commission, you might recognize, they're a shelter, the one on the south side, 65th and Cass, and there's that small brick building in there, and ours is immediately adjacent to it, but below ground. We have to do daily testing, there's confined space entry, it requires two people and, and testing of the air every single day that you go down in there, let alone, you know, weather conditions and things like that. So, the reconstruction of the pressure-adjusting station, which is also in the budget, the construction for it, will be an above-ground, above-grade building that we can access and all the telemetry we've brought up into the building, consistent with the rest of the system. This is just the engineering services agreement to do the design and the, the plans and specifications for, for this construction in a, in a, I don't want to say unusual, but in a typical way. Often, we do the, the Phase 2, which is the design-construction, is a separate contract from the inspection engineering, which would be the Phase 3. This particular agreement is written for Phase 2 and Phase 3 together. The Phase 1 portion is, I'm sorry, Phase 2 and Phase 3. The Phase 2 design portion is not to exceed 38,300, and the construction supervision services, the Phase 3 engineering, would be not to exceed 31,000, and that will actually occur in the next budget year. Or those services will probably be paid in the next budget year, and we'd like to start soon this spring. So, the, there's one engineering services agreement for those two subamounts put together for a total of $69,300.
Questions?
So, Steve, the only thing sitting out there outside of that Phase 2, Phase 3, 69,300 is for the warranty and anniversary services, which is periodic checkup, right?
Yes, sir. Right. There are no engineering services for that, and actual warranty, things would be part of the construction contract, whatever warranty we would require of the equipment.
But it takes, it takes it through design and project closeout.
Yeah. The design is right through the, the bidding process, and then if we award a construction contract, only then does the Phase 3 engineering come into play, and we're just pre-hiring them to do the construction supervision of it. It's, it's mostly the building, but there are water main and meter components with it. We're just bringing them above grade.
Right.
When you bring it above grave, will you have to heat it?
Yes.
Is that, is it heated down below, or is that one of the reasons they probably build it under, so they...
Well, it's, it doesn't have to be extraordinarily heated, it just has to be kept above freezing, and for that matter, there is such a very high flow of water that you actually don't have to heat it, because there's, there's a... flow of water that you actually don't have to heat it because there's a significant flow that you would never have a freezing problem of the water main itself. But it is an environment where people have to work, and just being in the shelter, you know, it should be easy to keep it heated above 35 degrees.
I was just wondering if that was one of the reasons that they might have put it underground?
Yeah. Well, it's mostly the confined space requirements and the, what the gases down in the, you know, down in the ground.
Any other questions? We have a motion.
Motion approved, Emery.
Second Scott.
Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebina.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, finance ordinance number 18.
We have before us on the 17th day of January 2011, a finance ordinance in the amount of $1,094,134.05.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Emery.
Discussion. Roll call. Finance ordinance number 18.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebina.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
I think, no, yes.
No, yes.
Thank you. Purchase order.
She got me nervous because she said I'm up next. Thank. Motion to approve.
Do you want to go to the podium?
Motion to approve purchase orders as a black for $368,320.56.
Second, Seneca.
Hearing no discussion, roll call on purchase orders.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebina.
Yes.
Unless there's something else to come before the board, at this time, I entertain a motion to go into executive session as requested by the manager.
So moved, Emery.
Trustee Emery.
Second Scott.
Roll call.
For personnel.
Personnel.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebina.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.